This Livingston City Commission meeting on May twenty first is called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willich.
Here.
Excellent. And Commissioners, I talked to Chair Kale and we're going to do the same process that we did last time where the chair will do, the chair will read the proclamations and I'll run the meetings since I'm here and she's virtual. But thank you. First up on the agenda is public comment. So this is general public comment for items not on the agenda and also for the consent items. So if you have comment, now's your chance. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the City Commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. So I will welcome folks in the room that want to give public comment on consent items. Or yeah, welcome Nancy. Yeah.
I'm usually on Zoom.
Yeah, we recognize.
I have a couple of comments. First, no, keep it just. I'm Nancy. I've kids. I live on Brookline Street now. I moved from Calender. I'm still concerned about the miles road. We haven't gotten that taken care yet. But anyway, but mainly I wanted to talk about, I think, is this probably some employees month or something too?
Yeah, we have a few proclamations and Public Works is one of them.
Okay.
And so is
EMS.
EMS. So we have all those folks in the room.
Because I wanted to mention somebody who just passed away and he didn't have a memorial and that's Ken Cass Phillips. And many people who know who were in the city at that time, when he started a program every summer and they had a music event. It was about three or four days long. And the entire almost everybody of the public employees worked on it too. It was a great event. And and I think he went the wellness center, whatever gets completed or at when there's a certain time, I think some kind of memory plaque or something in his honor should be done too because if I don't read, I couldn't find it in the enterprise today and maybe it was on France and Davis. But anyway, he did this after he retired from the city and he did it maybe for about twenty years. And then also went to the he had Cheryl Crow and different ones and he would go and hear them first to be sure it was okay, you know, and and almost all the graduating classes went for years for their reunions. It was a big event. Then the other thing I wanted to mention too is the old older Americans month is and I think there's a new coordinator of the senior center too. So I'd encourage you to help support it. And also there's music on Friday night at five thirty to eight thirty this week and he plays the new coordinator and he is amazing and it's free, free dancing. So you're invited. And then one other thing is I'm not sure about this open bottle thing. I've read, is that on the agenda tonight?
Consent item, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I am very concerned about that and I'll tell you why. I come from a family of alcoholics. We had a lot of alcoholism in Livingston. It's known for a high rate of alcoholism. And I absolutely think it's the worst idea because you're encouraging it. To me, it would be better if say the fourth, nobody drank it. I know that's not possible, but you know, and I say that while a margarita is waiting for me too, but I, but anyway, but I just feel that it's such a, so many people have been hurt and injured physically and emotionally. And I just think it's a very bad thing to start something like that. And also I, if something happened to one of our kids or adults during that time, I just think I would just feel terrible. And so I think that's why I came in person tonight, really to speak out against that. I think and we're hiring new people to work with mental health and issues. I just think it's the time.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to offer a public comment, general public comment or I'm coming on consent items? Chair Kale, what you can't see is that the room is predominantly city staff.
Okay.
Maybe I'll take a picture with my phone and text it to you.
Yeah, I can't see it.
You know, people online, is there anybody online that wants to offer public comment? Not seeing any. Right. General public comment is closed. Next on the agenda are consent items. So tonight we have six consent items, A through F. I'm gonna right away ask that we pull F, but are there any others that Commissioners would like to have pulled? For discussion. Okay, so we have yeah, oh, just one second, I'm gonna turn to Commissioner Schwartz and then you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Schwartz says E. And Chair Kale?
A.
Okay. Other consent items pulled? Right. Do I have a motion for consent items B through D?
Make motion consent to approve consent items B, C, and D. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
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 Five zero. Motion passes. I'm gonna go in reverse order for the poll. So the last one pulled was consent item A. So we'll start with you, Chair Kale.
I just have a couple of edits that I found in the notes. So for action item D in the notes, presentation of proposed water restrictions. The notes read Chair Kale called on the city manager to introduce the item. It should have been Vice Chair Newt. And then on the following action items, C, it was the same thing. So the, for the approval of the two city county compact chapters, it should be not Chair Kale, but Chair, Vice Chair Newt called on the city manager to introduce the item.
Anything else?
That's all I saw.
Thanks for those edits. Other Commissioners, any comments? All right, I'm gonna just check in with Mr. Gager. Do we need to vote on these one at a time or?
You know, that might be the most simple, especially because this one has some changes.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll just do them one at a time then. So do I have a motion on consent item A?
I'll make a motion to approve consent item A with the edits offered.
So motion by Kale and a second by Willich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Five zero, motion passes. Moving on to consent item E. Commissioner Schwartz.
I don't know if, if it's time if this person wants, we remain anonymous regarding the donation of the gazebo at the park. But whoever it is, I'd like to thank. And I think it's a wonderful addition to the park, especially where it's located, the parking and accessible water and stuff. So I just wanted to thank whoever's doing that in advance. I yield.
Other Commissioners?
I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you to the donors.
I'll triple that and also I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. I think that the change in location makes a lot of sense. It would be a shame to have to put up a gazebo and then disassemble it for a water line repair if that should come in the future. So do I have a motion then for consent item E?
I'll make the motion to approve consent item E.
I'll second.
Motion by Schwartz and the second by Kale. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to F. So F was the gateway overlay zone. I wanted to pull this because this is a topic that has been coming up as long as I've been on the Commission and I know it was an issue before I was on the Commission. So over five and a half years for sure. I was really pleased to see this report and to see what was in it. I think those of us that have been spent any amount of time on the planning board would recognize that this has been an issue that the community really cares about. And I thought that the takeaways were really fantastic. I appreciated the level of details and considering the different entries into Livingston. And I also appreciated that some of the things that have been left out of the conversation or that the community really wanted to bring forward were included in this document. So I guess thank you to Mr. Gager for bringing this forward and also to your team that decided it was a good idea to add this to the scope of work. I think it's really great. And I wanted to hear if you have thoughts on what a path forward might look like as this fits is, if it's within part of the growth policy.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Chair Newt. We at a staff level do have a, excuse me, an idea of how we will implement this. And for those of you at home who haven't read, there are basically three recommendations or three areas of recommendation. One refers or relates to signage, public art, and landscaping. The second is related to land use building form and matters related to zoning. And then the third category are roadway changes. So there are different certainly time horizons for some of those roadway changes are a little bit longer blue items than than some of the others. And so and similarly signage, public art and landscaping. Given that the city owns very little land out at the gateways in the right away area, there's there's certainly is a little bit of work to do there. So the low hanging fruit in these recommendations are the land use recommendations and you know, for for everyone who's read it, I apologize, but there is a note of expanding the existing building design standards in section thirty four to six of the Livingston Municipal Code to cover more of the city than they do, and specifically the gateway areas. At this point, they only really covered the neighborhood commercial on the east end of Park leading up to the river by KPRK. And so that is a conversation that we will initiate with the Consolidated Land Use Board at their June twelfth meeting. Perhaps looking at those building design standards that were enacted in September of two thousand and six. And so they've, they've been around almost twenty years, but I think expanding their, their coverage area to include some of the gateways is potentially a good first start that we'll explore with the Land Use Board. So sorry if that long-winded answer.
No, that's helpful. Actually, thank you. Other Commissioners?
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair Newt, I would just say thank you. Oh, sorry.
You're good. You're good. I just, you go first, Chair Kale, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to. I really appreciate this summary and recommendation memo as well. I attended both. Actually, I think you and I both attended the the actual in-person event and was really, I was really glad to see what came out of that. I thought that this was a really excellent job and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can move some of this forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Reliance.
The order worked out on that because I just wanted to thank folks who participated in that event. You know, it's just kind of another example of fantastic engagement that we get from our community and the more voices we hear to inform policy coming from the Land Use Board, from from the Commission, the better off that policy is going to be. So I just appreciate the input that we got on that.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Yes, thanks for pulling up and highlighting this very important work. I wish I remember when it was and I just couldn't pretend, but but thank you, yeah, for bringing it to the front.
Yeah. Sure thing. I also realized that we probably had some cost savings, by the way, staff decided to move this forward. So I wanna underscore the value in that because consultants can, consultants cost money. And so I appreciate that they found a way to do it that worked within the budget. All right. So I will make a motion to approve action item A. Motion by Newt and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Next on the agenda we have some proclamations which I wore a very special shirt for tonight. Shannon Holmes in the room. Been talking about it for five and a half years, Shan Holmes. Finally got it made. Public Works, right there. Told you I'd keep my word on the shirt before I was done on the commission and now I can wear it every year. Sometimes, or even when I'm not in the commission, people can just get these made for fun if they want. So proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana declaring May nineteenth through twenty fifth as National Public Works Week in Livingston, Montana. And Chair Kale, you have at least two handfuls of public work staff in the room. I see many departments represented or many divisions, excuse me, represented.
All right. Well, thank you. And so if those individuals from all those departments of public works would like to stand up while I read this proclamation and recognition, we always appreciate that. And maybe Vice Chair Newt can take a photograph for me. I see her, her picture, her camera in her hand. So we'll go ahead and get this started. Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring May nineteenth through the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four as National Public Works Week in this, in in the city of Livingston, Montana. Whereas the city of Livingston, Montana recognizes the crucial role that public work plays in the lives of its residents, ensuring the functionality, safety, and comfort of our community. And whereas the diligent efforts of the dedicated men and women of the water and sewer, solid waste, parks, streets, and water reclamation departments contribute immeasurably to well being, to the well-being and prosperity of our city. And whereas during National Public Works Week, we honor and express our gratitude to the thirty five individuals who compromise these departments for their unwavering commitment to excellence and service to our community. And whereas their tireless work ensures the provision of clean water, effective waste management, well-maintained streets and parks, sustainable and then sustainable environmental practices, enhancing the quality of life for all residents of Livingston and whereas the twenty twenty four theme of National Public Works Week is advancing quality of life for all, highlighting the dedication of public works professionals to improve the well-being and accessibility of essential services for every member of our community. And whereas the city of Livingston encourages all residents to join in recognition and thanking our public work professionals for their invaluable contribution to our city. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, Chair, do hereby declare May nineteenth through the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to be National Public Works Week in Livingston, Montana. Further, I encourage community members to join in celebrating the accomplishments of service, the accomplishment of service of our public works department and to reflect on the vital role they play maintaining our community's infrastructure and well-being, advocating the quality, the advancing the quality of life for all. Signed this day, May twenty first, twenty twenty four. Thank you all.
And Mr. Gager, I would invite you if you want to introduce any of your staff to the community and if you have any words to offer, we'd be grateful.
Well, yes, I guess we've got Jason, Mike, Ryan, Faith. I think I see Chuck hanging out back there and then Trace, Adam, Shannon, and Brad. So thank you all and all of your coworkers for everything you do.
We have all divisions?
No, we don't see silos. We saw waste back there. Or streets. Yeah, good point.
Close, but Mike used to be streets, right? Was Mike streets? No, Mike was never streets? Seasonal streets. I'm counting it. Check.
And if I could, Logan, who was our newly appointed super lead man, I just had to leave because ironically he got an after-hours call out from dispatch.
Thank you, Logan, for your service to our community. Yeah, that's fantastic. Is there anything else you want to add, Mr. Gager?
I know, you know, I would say that all of our employees advance our quality of life in the city of Livingston every day, but certainly on the public work side, it's very noticeable. So thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right. Next up, another proclamation. And Chair Kale, there is a very full handful of staff on the other side of the room with their chief, Chabalowski. So you have more staff. So this is a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana declaring May nineteenth through twenty fifth as the fiftieth anniversary of National EMS Week in Livingston, Montana. Chair Kale.
Thank you. Vice Chair Newt, get that camera out again and take a picture for me. All right. Thank you. Here we go. And I'm not used to having to read these off my computer. So give me just a minute so I can get it nicely in my screen. All right, here we go. And I'm assuming they're all standing at this point. So here we go. Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring May nineteenth through the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four as the fiftieth anniversary of National EMS Week in the city of Livingston. Whereas the city of Livingston, Montana recognizes the vital importance of emergency medical services in safeguarding the health and well-being of our residents. And whereas EMS professionals have been frontline responders providing vital care and assistance in times of medical crisis, not only within the city of Livingston, but extending across all, all of Park County. And whereas Livingston Fire and Rescue comprised of thirty eight dedicated individuals represents the epitome of professional and self professionalism and selflessness in delivering emergency medical care. And whereas within Livingston, Fire and Rescue, fifteen full-time employees are licensed paramedics equipped with advanced skills and knowledge to administer critical care intervention, while twenty part-time employees are certified emergency medical technicians trained to provide essential pre-hospital care. And whereas it is noteworthy that some paramedics within Livingston Fire and Rescue have achieved the status of critical care paramedics delivering the utmost standard of pre-hospital care obtainable in the United States and proudly serving as the sole entity, as, as that sole entity in Montana to offer this level of care. And whereas several of those devoted individuals have served or are presently serving as flight medics, extending their expertise in both private and military applications. Therefore enhancing the continuum, the continuum of care provided to our community and beyond. And whereas the theme of this year's National EMS Week honoring our past serves as a reminder to recognize and pay tribute to the trailblazers and pioneers who dedicated and sacrifice have shaped the landscape of EMS, paving the way for the exceptional standard of care we uphold today. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, do hereby declare May nineteenth through twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to be National EMS Week in Livingston, Montana. Further, let us come together as a community to honor the legacy of our EMS professionals, past and present, and express our profound gratitude for their unwavering commitment to preserving life and ensuring the health and safety of our community. Signed this day of May, twenty twenty, or this day of May, the twenty first, twenty twenty four. Thank you all.
Uh, Mr. Gager, would you like to do the same for this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, well, first of all, thank you all. I know there's several others who could be here. So we've got Chief Chabalowski. I saw the captain ran out. It sounds like maybe he's got a, got another call as well. And then we've got Molly and then we've got Brea and Andrew. So.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot and also good job.
That's good.
It's like a hundred people, you, you know, yeah. Um, thank you all for being here. Chair Kale, is there anything you wanted to offer?
Um, I would just like to thank all those in the room and those who are serving our, our community all the way in the, in the city and then all the way up into the county. You are certainly very appreciative, appreciated. And thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you. Other Commissioners, anything to add?
I'd say Chief Chabalowski is the city employee I run into in town most often. It's always a pleasure.
I hope it's not an emergency.
No, no.
Like, okay.
Just about.
Okay. That's a relief. I mean, because I can go either way with that end of the Commissioner table. Could be emergencies.
And I usually see one of them at the grocery store or something.
Well, that's good. Anything else folks want to add?
Keep up the good work. We're, we're quite lucky to have staff that we do in EMS. I mean, in state, we probably have to be one of the best. You know, I'm correct me if I'm wrong, but every firefighter basically is a paramedic in EMS.
You weren't corrected, so.
Good. Thank you. Are you?
Yeah, I mean, we're two for two tonight with departments.
Yeah.
Not a park. You guys don't have to stand all night. Unless Chair Kale says so. Chair Kale, do you need to just stand? No.
No, please let them sit down.
If you need to go. It's only gonna get more exciting.
They're very attentive. They're very attentive. Um, next up is another proclamation. Thanks, guys. Be public work. Okay, there's some movement in the room, Chair Kale. So I'm gonna give it just a minute. All right. So next up on the agenda is a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana declaring May nineteenth through twenty fifth, twenty twenty four as National Travel and Tourism Week in Livingston, Montana. And I would like to also identify that Leslie Feigl and the Chamber of Commerce is in the room. So Chair Kale.
All right. And I can also see online that Chris King with Explore Livingston is, is online. And I can also see other tourism professionals. I see Patricia Graybo on the line and I don't know everybody on here, but I know we've got a few tourism professionals on the line. So thank you for being here with us this evening. And I will go ahead and read the proclamation. If anyone in the room would like to stand up, that's, that will be great. I can't see everybody. And so we'll go ahead and get this started. Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring May nineteenth to the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Livingston. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Livingston, Montana's economic development and workforce. And whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of two point eight trillion dollars supporting fifteen million American jobs and travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Livingston, Montana and across the United States by generating eighty nine billion dollars in state and local tax revenue in twenty twenty three to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. And whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and opportunities that power our economy, our nation, and Livingston, Montana. And whereas tourism is the largest economic driver in Park County, nine resident spending in Montana exceeds five point billion dollars annually. Park County generates up to five hundred million dollars annually in tourism revenue and direct bed tax funds collected in Livingston support local tourism programs that exceed two hundred thousand dollars annually. And whereas Americans' travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximum growth in leisure business and international inbound travelers. Increasing travel to within the United States drives our economy to a more prosperous future and connects America. And whereas small businesses account for more than sixty percent of leisure and hospitality employment and travel is, is an essential industry and we must continue to communicate that growth. That growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, fosters mutual understanding, and connects the nations. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of this, of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, Chair, do hereby declare May nineteenth through the twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to be National Travel and Tourism Week in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge city, I urge citizens of Livingston, Montana to join me in recognizing the essential role this industry plays in Livingston, Montana. Signed the twenty first day of May, twenty twenty four. Thank you all.
Thank you. I alternate Mr. Gager again first. Mr. Gager, anything you want to add?
You know, I would thank everybody that is employed in the travel and tourism industry in Livingston. And I think it's a place that everyone should visit in their life. So thank you.
Chair Kale, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, it is definitely a business that's near and dear to my heart and I've worked in that industry for, on and off for very long. Well, it is definitely a business that's near and dear to my heart, and I've worked in that industry for, I don't know, for very long times throughout my lifetime. So um, yeah, I just, um, congratulate and thank all the folks in that business. It's it's a hard and difficult business at times, but usually very worthwhile. And it's really, um, uh, an asset to our community for sure with the amount of dollars it brings into this community. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Other commissioners, anything to add?
Uh, thanks to all the professionals who support the important industry in our town. It's vital to our success.
All right, well said. Appreciate all of you. Thanks for those of you online and in the room um, for that. And now we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is action items. We have three of them tonight. First up, um, is the budget. We also have our finance director in the room, Chair Kill, just so you know. Um, this presentation of city managers recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. I, um, am pleased after a year and a half as city manager to present my, uh, second budget recommendation. But, uh, before I do so, I would echo your comments and, uh, and thank uh, Finance Director Paige Betterhoff for everything she did, uh, to get us to this point and everything she will do to get us to completion of the budget here in the coming months. Um, it really is a, uh, large undertaking, as I'm sure you can imagine, but it's quite a bit easier when you've got capable help like, like I do in the finance department. So, uh, thank you, Paige. Um, and I, with that, I will, um, start the presentation. And so we, everybody at home can see and, uh, follow along. So at a, at a very, very high level, uh, the total recommended budget comes in, uh, just shy of thirty-and-a-half-million dollars. It includes a general fund with eight-point-seven-million in expenditures. Um, and, and in that eight-point-seven, we have a significant, uh, amount of capital expenditures included. And so on a, on an operating basis, uh, the, the city takes in about nine-point-three-million in operating revenues, ongoing revenues that support seven-point-eight-million in operating expenditures. And so we do have a, uh, a slight operating budget surplus of, uh, approximately a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand. And, um, as you may recall from, uh, our budget last year when I arrived, um, our, our fund balance, uh, was, was close to fifty percent. And, and in the current FY twenty-four budget, we have made, uh, investments in, in capital and other one-time projects. And, uh, we will continue that uh, in, in twenty twenty-five as we, uh, work our, our fund balance down closer to, uh, whether it's the, the government finance officers associations recommended sixteen-point-seven percent or, or something closer to, uh, thirty-two or thirty-three percent. Um, that, uh, that, that number will, um, be in that range, uh, moving forward. And, um, uh, as we look at our, our property tax, uh, revenue, which is the largest source of, of general fund revenue, um, as, as we all know, we are constrained, uh, by the state of Montana to only increase our, uh, our revenue by half the, the rate of inflation, uh, observed over the prior three years. And so um, one, one can see in, in twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, uh, with inflation being a little um, greater than it has historically been, uh, the city has, um, has seen, uh, some, some slight uptick, although this is uh, completely separate from the, the assessment issue that, that we discussed in, in the fall. Um, a- as I noted, uh, the, the property tax is the largest source of general fund revenue, uh, at, at just north of forty percent. Um, our second largest source of, uh, revenue in the general fund is actually, um, funds from the state and, uh, and our intergovernmental partners um, followed, uh, followed thereafter, um, by, um, by other sources, uh, including, uh, licenses and permits and charge for services. Um, and, and so, uh, in the, the fiscal twenty-five budget year, um, the city is maintaining its focus on implementing the growth policy. And so, uh, this, this slide may look familiar, um, from last year and, uh, last year's budget, uh, process, but also from, uh, from last year's growth policy kickoff. And so, um, you know, we are focusing really on, on four areas. Um, and, and those are the, the land use recommendations in the growth policy, uh, housing, resilience, resiliency, and, uh, placemaking and, and community character. And I'll just take a, a few quick moments to run through some of the, uh, the funding priorities in, in those areas. Um, in the, the land use area, I am recommending, uh, funding of an additional forty-thousand dollars to support the planning department in their development of, of policies, uh, to help implement the growth policy, including the, uh, the gateway overlay zone work that was, was touched upon earlier in this evening's meeting. And then also, uh, to, to help with, uh, the, the work related to the, uh, city's floodplain regulations um, that you may, uh, recall, not only appears in the, in the growth policy, but also in the, uh, the report from Great West Engineering um, about how to implement the growth policy. Uh, additionally, we will, um, carry forward the hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from the current year uh, to, um, fund the overhaul of the city's zoning code and subdivision regulations. We, um, had gone out with, uh, an RFP for that and, um, were, were unsuccessful in, in awarding a contract, uh, as a result of that request for proposal. So that has been reissued. Um, we had, uh, some extensive contractor outreach and are, are very confident that we will, um, see several, uh, several good proposals here in the, the coming weeks when it's due. Um, and then skipping over to, uh, placemaking and, and community character, uh, I'm, I'm pleased to, uh, to, to inform the commission that uh, we've included a hundred-and-eighty-six, a hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand. Um, and, and this is, uh, related to the House Bill three fifty-five State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act that will, um, begin the, the phasing out of unpaved or untreated streets in the city of Livingston. And so uh, FY twenty-five represents, uh, year one in that multi-year program. And, uh, the, the treatment that, uh, has been piloted out in Green Acres area, uh, will be expanded to other unpaved um, areas of the city, which, as, as we all know, um, certainly benefits anybody who's, who's riding a, in a, in a vehicle, but also benefits our, our non-motorized users as well um, by providing a, a bit more of a safe and stable, um, surface for, uh, for our bike riders. Um, uh, similarly, uh, the, the budget in FY twenty-five includes a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, uh, to complete the design and installation of the three rapid flashing beacons, again, through the, uh, HB three fifty-five State Local Infrastructure Partnership Act. And, uh, and these beacons were a, a critical component of the Trails and Act of Transportation Plan. Um, and then, uh, you know, because, um, Livingston and its urban forest, um, you know, go hand in hand. Uh, I'm, I'm also pleased to, to say that we've included forty-four thousand in, uh, both state and local funding um, to, to continue the, the care and development of the urban forest, which will, uh, help us complete the tree inventory, um, plant, uh, several hundred new trees and, and remove, uh, several, uh, less than a dozen hazard trees. And, and then, um, as we, um, move forward on, on some of our branding and development, you know, funding is carried forward for the, the development of wayfinding cultural and sustainable signage within the city, um, a- as, as we move forward, that will help, I think, uh, really, um, I identify, you know, certain places, um, of, of importance within the community for, for residents and visitors alike. Um, and then, uh, on the, the housing side, uh, we, we certainly do recognize the, the role that housing plays in the stability and economic development. Um, and, and I think we made some great strides here in the last year with planning and development ordinance. And in, um, in, in FY twenty-five, we will continue to, uh, work on housing initiatives uh, by, by funding a, uh, a housing coordinator position, um, in conjunction with other community partners, uh, that will help inform um, not only our, our policy development, but also our application review and, and community discussions. We, uh, we are um, very consistently approached by, um, by housing, um, applicants, potential applicants, um, looking at, at all spec- uh, spec- areas of the spectrum of housing, uh, from senior housing um, to affordable housing, to, uh, tiny homes and, uh, and, and other multifamily. And so um, that housing coordinator position, uh, really supports a lot of those conversations. And, and we're optimistic that, um, we'll, we'll, we'll pull some affordable, affordable housing units out of, out of these conversations here in the coming year or so. Uh, and, and then, um, recognizing that, uh, that resiliency is, is critical. Um, n- not only when you're located on the river, but also when we are a bit of a tourism-based economy. Um, we, uh, we have some fairly significant, uh, investments in, in resiliency. Uh, the, uh, the chief and I, earlier today, we're, uh, having some conversations with Park County and Livingston Healthcare, uh, in relation to the Mobile Crisis Response Team. And, uh, at, uh, the, the best of the commission, um, following the conversation with the county commission, I've recommended funding a hundred thousand to support the establishment of a, a local crisis response team in, uh, Livingston and Park County. And I am, uh, I'm, I'm optimistic after, uh, our conversations this afternoon that, um, that we have a, 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 a great, uh, path forward there. Uh, and then similarly, uh, funding is included, um, to support the, um, the city's share of work in the recently initiated Silver Jackets Project that will, uh, perform a, uh, levy breach analysis on the, uh, on, on the levy. That will help us in our future, uh, mitigation and emergency response planning efforts. Uh, and, and this is all part of a, the, the larger, uh, floodplain review process that, uh, is ongoing with the, the Army Corps and, and FEMA. And so uh, we, we will learn under different, uh, river circumstances, you know, how, how much water is moving, how quickly, and, and what that would mean in the event that, uh, that the levy is breached or overtopped. And so uh, Chief Chabelowski and, uh, and Assistant Chief Emanuel, uh, will know how to, uh, how to play, to deploy their forces most effectively uh, in, in that situation. Uh, a- and then similarly, um, you know, uh, resiliency takes many forms. And, and so we are, I am recommending, uh, continued support of the Warming Center, uh, in, in recognition of the, the vital work that is done there. And so, uh, if, if there are any questions at this point, I would be happy to stand for them. Uh, otherwise, I, I was going to do a quick, um, department-by-department, uh, summary for the, for the commission.
Any questions so far?
None here.
Chair Kill, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay. Please continue.
Okay. Uh, so in the, uh, Legislative Department, I am recommending that the part-time, uh, fifty-percent city court position, uh, is, is, um, upgraded to a full-time position. Uh, I think in the last, uh, nine months, ten months, um, we have seen that, that there is a, uh, a volume of work that, that could be done to support you folks. And so I've recommended, uh, that that position become, uh, full-time. And then similarly, uh, recommending funding for a, a number of different uh, different programs. I touched on a few, including the, the Warming Center and the, the Housing Coordinator Program. But, uh, this area of the budget is also, uh, where we include funding for, um, different community outreach and, and other training, um, exercises. So we've, we've got ten thousand for, uh, victim uh, services support. Um, and, and then we also have funds for a, a suicide prevention program, um, that's been proposed, the, the spay and neuter clinic. Um, and, and similarly, we, we, we've included funds for a, uh, community garden study, um, to, to identify potential locations, uh, there. And, and then also, uh, funds to, um, continue to support the, uh, the Wind Rider Program and, and had a, a nice conversation with, uh, the, the management team over there today. And, and they're very excited for FY twenty-five. Um, in the, uh, Judicial Department, um, we, uh, have, have no changes that are recommended. Um, the, uh, the budget that is presented is that that was, uh, requested by the, um, the city judge. And, um, and, and we support that, that recommendation. Uh, within the, the city manager's office, um, very, very minimal changes for the, uh, the coming year. Um, no staffing changes, no, no capital projects and, uh, and, and some, um, you know, minor changes in, uh, in the, the material and supplies budgets um, that are relatively in line with, with historical spending. Um, the, the Finance Department is a, uh, is a similar situation, um, where there are, uh, there are no, um, uh, employee or, or capital requests here. Um, I, I will note as I, as I go through this, um, you, you know, the, the city, uh, i- is of course, uh, insured by MMIA for our health, um, program. And, uh, and, and we do have, uh, varying increases. And I, I believe the, the average rate of increases is approximately eight percent um, across our medical plans, if I'm not mistaken. And so, um, this year, we do have those increased costs and, and also uh, the, the commission may remember that last year, um, we did a larger, uh, citywide general wage increase for employees, um, recognizing that, uh, wages are really just one part of the compensation, um, picture. Uh, we are focusing this year in FY twenty-five, posing to focus a little bit more on the benefit side of the equation. And so for the last week, uh, we've had, um, some, some benefit education meetings with staff and have actually made some, some tweaks to the, um, the employee benefit side of the total compensation picture that um, that, that seem like they are, are, are going to be well-received when, when implemented. Uh, we've got, um, differences in, in the medical coverage. Um, uh, we've, we've increased the, the monthly allowance for, for folks. Um, and, and actually, for the first time, we've, we've allowed folks with, with other coverages that may be, uh, preferential to opt out of, of the city's coverage uh, in return for, uh, a, a smaller stipend amount. Um, and so there's, uh, a, a lot of moving parts, additional life insurance as well. Um, the, the, uh, the, the new HR director and I heard in our conversations with employees. And so um, this, this year, uh, if, if, um, there are, uh, you know, increases on the, the personnel and benefits line item within the budget, um, they are more than likely attributed to, um, to, to the benefit changes that, that we are, uh, looking to implement here in, in fiscal twenty-five. Um, and so then, uh, moving on to the, the Planning Department, as I, as I mentioned, uh, we are not adding staff. However, we are uh, including funding, we're not only carrying forward the funding for the zoning code update, um, but also, uh, adding an additional, um, forty thousand for, uh, for outsourced, uh, support, um, there. In the, the city's attorney's office, um, the city attorney position will remain contracted out in fiscal twenty-five. And, um, and so there are some budgetary savings as a, as a result of that. We will continue to employ in-house paralegal who will support, uh, not only our, our city civil attorney, uh, John Hess, but also our, our city prosecuting attorney, uh, Bruce Becker. And uh, my, that's a, an arrangement that, um, you know, really seems to be working out very well. And, uh, and as you can see here, um, brings, brings some cost savings along with it. Uh, the Recreation Department, as you recall, in fiscal, uh, twenty-four, um, was pulled out of the Administrative Services Department and made a standalone department under the auspices of a, a director. And in, uh, fiscal twenty-five, uh, we're excited to see, uh, just what that department can do. And a- a- as a result of their, their requests, we have increased funding on the materials and, and services, materials and supply side of the budget um, that will allow, uh, Maggie and, and the team down there to, uh, you know, kind of increase the level of programming they have. We've also um, slightly increased the, the part-time, um, budget, uh, with the, the, uh, addition of a, uh, summertime pool manager position uh, to relieve the, the director of, of some of those duties so she can, uh, focus on, on other areas. Um, so uh, excited for some, uh, increased, uh, programming in, in the recreation part in FY twenty-five. Um, in the, uh, the, the Police Department, um, we are recommending, I am recommending the addition of an administrative assistant to be shared, uh, fifty-fifty with Livingston Fire Rescue. And, and so the, the position, um, would, would support the administrative, uh, aspects of, of police dispatch, uh, fire and EMS. Uh, and, and then I am, uh, pleased to, uh, have, have accepted the new chief's recommendations on, on materials and supplies, um, and, and on the capital side, uh, we have some, some standard equipment replacement, which, uh, includes two vehicles, um, one general use and one that is a, uh, a canine vehicle, um, that, uh, that has, uh, some, some age and some miles on it. And, and of course, as you know, the, the dispatch center is, is partially funded through a, a, a different tab, um, that we share with the county. And we'll, uh, we'll chat about that here in a little bit. Uh, on the, the fire side of the, the house, as I, uh, mentioned. Uh, on the, the fire side of the, the house, as I, uh, mentioned, they will, um, if, if the budget is approved as presented. Uh, will benefit from the addition of, uh, an administrative assistant to help share some of that workload. So our, uh, as in police are very highly trained, uh, and, and very capable men and women can actually focus on, on serving the community. And, uh, and delivering that great service and, and we can get some of the paperwork, um, off their desk and, uh, and, and put that to a little bit less specialized, uh, work. So on the, the fire and, and rescue, uh, side, um, similarly is, is funded jointly, uh, with Park County. And we'll, we'll talk about that, uh, a little bit there, but we have, uh, generally, um, some, uh, equipment replacements as, as requested by the chief. And, uh, and, and you'll see later on, there is a, um, a, a vehicle there that, that has been requested. Um, in the building inspection side, um, there are, uh, there are no material changes. Although I, I will point out that the personnel and benefits line is, is increased in FY twenty-five. Due to a, a potential payment related to accrued benefits of a, of a long-tenured employee, uh, in, in that department. And within, uh, the, the Administrative Services Department, uh, pleased to, uh, to have welcomed our new HR Director, uh, Carrie into the field. And, and she has, um, taken a close, uh, look at the budget and I think she has identified some, uh, some savings. Uh, she's actually implemented some already in FY twenty-four, as you can see. And, uh, and, and so we will, uh, be investing a, a little bit differently in the, the HR program, um, here in, in FY twenty-five. And, um, you know, based on the feedback I've received in the last week, uh, I, I think that, um, that it's going to be a great improvement for employees. Uh, here in FY twenty-five, uh, on, on the benefit side of the house, certainly. In, uh, in code enforcement, um, you may recall, this is a, another, uh, new division, um, that, uh, was formerly embedded within the Police Department. And, and last year we, um, we, we pulled out, uh, that position and replaced it with a sworn officer. And so we, uh, in FY twenty-five, the city will, uh, continue moving forward with our, our two code enforcement officers. Uh, one focused on parking, um, and, and other, um, downtown issues and, and the other focused on, on animal control. And, and some more neighborhood, um, peripheral issues. And, uh, and, and so, um, really some, uh, some minimal investments there, um, just recognizing that, um. That we're now kind of a year into the operation and have a, a little bit better handle on, on, uh, on some of our costs. Uh, but this is a, a, an area where, uh, I think the community will see some, uh, some good positive changes in the coming weeks. As the, uh, electronic, uh, parking system is, is rolled out and, and some of the, um, some of those, those changes occur. Um, within the Parks Division, um, we, uh, will move forward with the, the same staffing levels as our, in FY twenty-four. Uh, with four full-time employees and five seasonal employees. And, uh, we have funded, um, capital, uh, capital equipment, um, largely. Uh, and, and as you can see, um, that we do have some, some parks projects that are funded out of, of other funds. Uh, and, and we've got plans to, um, uh, upgrade not only playground equipment, um, but, but also, uh, the, the trees as well fall within this. Um, and the, the forty-four thousand for, uh, for that program. Um, the, the non-departmental is, um, is really, uh, where we, um, budget for some of the, the less glamorous. Uh, items of, of city government, including IT. And the, uh, the IT budget, uh, is, is being recommended as was, uh, proposed by, uh, by Park County and, and their program. Um, and, uh, and, and I will say that, uh, it, it is certainly necessary to, to upgrade our switches. Um, as, as noted earlier, uh, dispatch, um, is, is funded jointly with, with Park County. And we are not, uh, including any, any additional, um, dispatchers recommended in, in FY twenty-five. Um, and so, uh, we'll, we'll move forward with, uh, with that as, as proposed by the dispatch group. In the, uh, Streets Division of Public Works, um, there is one minor personnel change. We are recommending that the three summer seasonal employees, uh, be converted into one year-round employee. Um, not only have we had a, a bit of a difficult time recruiting our summer seasonals. But, um, you know, I, in, in conversations with commissioners, uh, you know, I, I think I heard that, um, a focus on, on winter, uh, snow clearing. And, and some year-round work would actually be, um, be preferred and, and be beneficial. And so, um, you know, I am, I'm happy to, uh, to recommend that change. Uh, it is one that I have, um, seen and done in, in other cities and, and found it to be a, a fairly effective way to. Increase the, the level of service in the department for, you know, basically the same cost. And, and, and then as I, as I mentioned, uh, early on, we've, we've got some, some capital, uh, investments. Um, and, and certainly, uh, you know, the, the unpaid street improvements that, that I mentioned are, are one example. Um, and, and we've got some, uh, some CIP projects that were, uh, put off in, in fiscal. Uh, twenty-three due to lack of funding, uh, and those really are the, the downtown CIP in that, uh, alley between second and third. Um, and there are, uh, water sewer and street improvements involved in that project that, that we will jointly, um, undertake with the, the Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, and then, and then similarly, as you see, there are some, uh, e- equipment, uh, up- upgrades and, and repairs. Um, in, including to our, our street sweeper, um, which, you know, periodically has some issues and, um, and, and drops a part or two on the road. So, uh, we're, we're excited to, um, to do some overhaul work on that. Within the, uh, Water Division, um, the, the, the work there, um, we are not, um. We are recommending a, uh, a rate increase of five point six, which is consistent with inflation that was observed, um, over the last year. And, uh, and, and then as, as noted here, we have some, um, capital projects, uh, including that downtown second, third alley. And then, um, you may recall from our, our presentation, the Water Department, um, very recently.
Working for me. Can you, um, mute her? Sorry, I don't have the ability. If you want to make me call a second.
All right, Pumpkin, are we ready? He's such a good.
Do you want to make me a co-host so I can?
Uh, yeah, actually I will, absolutely. I can confirm, Ellie really is a sweet dog, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Apologize for the inconvenience there, commissioners. Um, so, uh, I believe we're still screen sharing.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, so in the, the Water Division, you may recall that, uh, the, the, the team, including, uh, Superintendent Townsend. Noted that the, uh, the, the system does not connect on the east end of town out in the public works area. And so we are, uh, recommending completing that loop, um, in, in the vicinity of the, the Bennett Street, uh, rail crossing. Um, which would, uh, provide not only redundancy in that part of town, but also, um, better pressure as well as we, uh, connect onto that, that dead end out to, uh, to the hospital. Um, and, and when we talk about the, uh, the rate increases, you know, I, I think kind of the, the most important thing, uh, to recall. You might recall that we, uh, introduced tiered rates in, in the current fiscal, uh, twenty-four. And the, the vast majority of our users, uh, including almost all residential users, fall into that first tier. And so we expect that, uh, that users in that first tier, uh, will see an average increase in their water bill. From, uh, estimated to be between eighty-five cents and two dollars and eighty-one cents at the high end. Um, and, uh, and, and as I said, that five point six is in line with, um, with the inflation that was, uh, observed over the last twelve months. And, um, and, and recognizing the, the inputs into, into that water, uh, department, uh, really are, are kind of market goods such as electricity and, and chemicals. Um, we are, we are at the, the limbs of the, the marketplace there. Uh, within the Sewer Division, um, we, uh, are recommending a, a slightly larger increase of, of eight percent. Um, and, and this really is to help, uh, fund some of our, our capital projects. I, I think, you know, from some of our past conversations, you're probably aware that our, our sewer fund is, is the fund that has some of the, the, uh, largest issues. Uh, lowest fund balance, um, and, and working capital. And so, um, we are, are constrained in that fund to, um, really do, um, mu- much, much above the, the, the minimum at this point. But, um, the, the good news is we are in a place where, uh, we, we can start pursuing some, um, some other external funding by, by virtue of the rate increases that we've done in the last few years. And so, um, on the, the, the sewer side, um, you know, a- again, the, the water and, and sewer are, uh, inherently linked. Uh, in that what comes out of your faucet goes down your drain. And so, uh, we do expect that, that most water users will see an increase of, of somewhere between a dollar and seventy and eight dollars and forty cents per month. Uh, with the average being closer to three dollars and seventy-one cents per month, um, per, per household. And, um, and then in the, the Solid Waste Division, um, you, uh, folks may recall the, uh, emergency purchase of a, um, of a new, uh, garbage truck that was made. Uh, in April or authorized in April, the vehicle should be here in, um, in the coming weeks. And, uh, and so we also have, uh, are, are recommending the, the purchase of a second new one, um, this fall. That has, this, this is the vehicle that was on order, uh, previously. Uh, we do have the ability to, to not take delivery if we would like, but, um, given the, the state of our, our vehicles and the, uh, the, the difficulties they've seen in the last, um, twelve months. I am recommending that we take delivery of that second garbage truck and, um, and, and, you know, have a, a, a new fleet here moving forward. Um, and, and, uh, you know, I, I would say, um, this time last year, uh, Vice Chair Noots, I, I do recall your, um, your request. And, and the commission's request for us to, uh, take a look at the solid waste, um, service and specifically, uh, as it relates to the commercial and residential curbside service. And the pickup there and, uh, we, um, uh, we are still working on that. Uh, Republic was in town, uh, a week ago, um, for a, a final walkthrough. We are expecting a proposal from them, um, that we will evaluate. Uh, it is, it's been a much, uh, longer and larger undertaking than we envisioned when we, uh, initiated the conversation. But we're excited to see, um, how those rates come back from Republic, um, so, so we can evaluate, um, our, our service. Uh, relative to, to the other potential provider and, and see if there are any, uh, opportunities for, for rate savings, um, there. Or, uh, or perhaps we will find out that the, the city of Livingston, uh, delivers the service pretty efficiently. Uh, time, time will tell and, and I will, uh, report back to you folks when, when that proposal is at the door. Um, and then, uh, finishing up on the, uh, on, on the ambulance, um, fund. Uh, this is the, the second half of our fire department's funding comes out of the, uh, ambulance department. And, um, in, uh, wh- while we are not, uh, recommending any additional emergency service personnel directly. Um, through that hundred thousand for mobile crisis response, um, it, it's very likely we will have some, um, some a- additional staff, uh, within the department. That are focused on, on mobile crisis response. And, uh, in lieu of a, of a new, uh, ambulance, I am recommending, um, that the, the city, um, purchase a late duty rescue vehicle. Which would be, um, a, a, a little bit more multipurpose and, uh, and, and help enable some, um, backcountry swift water. And, and other type of rescues that, that may, um, not be fully suited for an ambulance. And so, uh, with that, I will stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you for all that, Mr. Gager. I want to check in with you on process and what you are looking for from the commission tonight before I. Confer with the chair on next steps.
Absolutely. So, um, uh, we are not asking for any action tonight. Um, this was really a, a presentation, uh, I, I recognize a, a three hundred and eighty-page document delivered on a, on a Thursday afternoon. Uh, may not be conducive to conversation on Tuesday. So, uh, I wanted to take the opportunity to run through and, um, Director Federhoff and I, uh, will return on June fourth. Um, prepared, uh, with a, a budget resolution to perform the first reading, if it so suits the commission. Um, and, and, uh, but recognizing it is a, uh, thirty, almost thirty-one million dollar budget. Um, we would also be happy to, uh, entertain any questions or conversations, um, both tonight and on, on June fourth. Um, and if, if on June fourth, we're not in a place to move the budget resolution forward, uh, the, the director and I will return on June eighteenth. Um, ready to do the same, um, just pending the outcome of whatever conversations, uh, or, or questions or, or comments may come tonight or in two weeks.
Thank you. So it sounds like you're looking for, if we have clarifying questions or any feedback, initial feedback, we have with the idea that, um. We'll revisit this a couple of times in the noon, so the conversation's not over.
Okay.
Um, Chair Cale, I was thinking, opening up to public comment first to get feedback from the public before we turn to the commission. Does that work for you?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start with folks in the room. Is there anybody in the room that would like to offer feedback or comments? On the presentation that was offered tonight? Anything? You have takers on that very exciting presentation on Livingston City Budget? Right, I'm getting one head shake. No. Nothing? Okay. I'm gonna look online, folks online. I guess you really knocked it out of the park with the public on that one. Not even any questions. It was so clear.
Or maybe they're all asleep.
Well, at least we know one person's awake with their dog. At least one person. All right. I don't see any comments or questions from the public. So I'm gonna close public comment on this item and I'll turn it to the commission. Commissioners, that was a lot. I'm sure that we all have feedback and questions. Who would like to go first? Oh, thank you, Commissioner Willage.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much for this, uh, compendium and work. It's, uh, it's a lot to go through. Um, and I did, and, uh. Not much in the way of questions. Thank you for using the word columbarium. Uh, it reminds me of the word scenerarium. Those are the same thing. Nice for me to have to pull out the dictionary for that one. Um. I think I saw there was two Sanders, Parks and Streets, I think, was what I saw for that. Um, just getting clear for clarification on Appendix A two and A three. I don't know what page they're on.
No, not, not to worry, Mr. I know exactly what you're talking about. And that's actually, we jointly fund the Sander through those two funds. We'll just be purchasing one Sander copy.
Understood. Um, and that was actually the only thing I had was just about Sanders. I just saw the two different numbers in different places. I was wondering about those. Cool.
Commissioner Walsh, what tab are you wondering?
I am in tab twenty-seven.
So you're looking at the capital request forms?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. No, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's at the very beginning.
Great. For folks that want to follow along or catch up with you later on the recording. Anything else? From you tonight?
Don't forget me. Your work is awful.
Good work. Thank you.
I have a number of questions.
Commissioner Lyons, you're up.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Gager, tab. Three, you mentioned a conversation with the Transit Professionals. Would you elaborate on that? Um. I understand the, being on the, on the Wind Rider Board, I understand that. Our contribution is, uh, I mean, I would describe it as a drop in the bucket of, um, their costs. Uh, and we had talked in budget meeting prior about maybe upping our contribution and so I'm curious what, uh, they shared with you about their needs from the city.
Um, you know, it was simply that they were excited to have the city's support again in FY twenty-five and that, um, they, uh. Were happy with the, the level of funding that we were offering. We had some other conversations about other levels of funding there, but generally speaking, seemed to express support of this stuff.
Okay. Um. I guess, uh, we're not just, are we just asking questions or?
You can ask questions and you can offer feedback too, because this is like an iterative process where.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just offer my continued, um, interest in. Increasing the support from the city. increasing the support from the city for that, I think, very vital uh service that that's serves our economy and serves a a very important equity function in in our city. So major priority to me, and I see no change from years past. Many dog years, so please bear with me. Uh Parks Division tab fifteen. Uh I recall that last year we allocated a substantial amount of money for landscaping around the skate park. Uh which hasn't happened. Um and I also don't see it um in this year's budget, so I'm kind of curious about the status there.
Uh great question. We have had some conversations and it's my understanding that Public Works is moving forward on those improvements in the current year. Um and and was expecting to expend those funds here in the next forty five days on that project. Um to the extent that that is not uh completed in the next forty five days, then we will um necessarily need to carry forward that funding and do a budget adjustments um to pay those those bills in twenty twenty five.
Gotcha. Um. So the reason I bring it up is safety. Um the the situation around the skate park offers a um a safety hazard. Uh another safety consideration not seen in here, haven't had a chance to talk about it, would be lighting. Um it's probably would be more useful at the shoulder seasons with given our how long we have light in the summertime. Uh but I've heard from uh my constituency and interest in uh lighting at at the skate park.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and it looks like there's even some decent infrastructure that could be utilized. Um and just placement and maybe uh a few more uh could really change the amount of utilization that that it's seen there. So.
I I really appreciate the comments, Commissioner Lyons, and as we uh move forward with the Parks Master Plan. I do expect that Miles Park area uh in the vicinity of the Civic Center to get a a lot of attention. Uh because as we know or do know, uh that's within the U R A district, and so there are funding sources available um for the skate park and Miles Park that don't exist for other areas of the city.
Great.
I appreciate the uh the point on lighting. I don't know if that's one that we've heard in our conversations.
Um. Tab twenty one, solid waste. Uh you mentioned a new truck. A new uh garbage truck. But then right after that, you mentioned that there's a possibility that we might be contracting out um those services. Uh that purchasing a new truck and then being on the verge of potentially contracting out the services seems imprudent to me. And if you please explain how I'm giving that wrong, I'd appreciate it.
Um no, no, you're 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 not getting it wrong. Uh on its face, that would be a foolish move to buy a new piece of equipment for a service that we might not deliver. Um all of our conversations with uh Republic, um the the current vendor who might potentially expand some of their services, um get the prices right and services right for the community. Um they uh they need trucks and they have indicated to us that if they were um to take over that service, they would uh purchase all of our equipment from us as part of that.
Okay, uh that makes that makes sense. Um is there a way to uh be careful with the timing? Um I mean, I I guess it's still it still seems like there's potential to to lose out on um you know, vehicle depreciates like the instant it goes off a lot. Um so that seems to me like a and I trust your and and the director's expertise on this, but um just a note of caution on kind of the timing and how that might work out. Um and then finally, there are a lot of vehicles in in this budget. Um and as a clean transportation researcher, um I just wanna bring up the potential for uh clean fueled vehicles for the city. I think that's um that would be in line with with some of the other direction, uh particularly as it relates to resilience. Um and I think that it's not that often that we see such a huge number of vehicles in in the budget. Um and I also understand that the the market has kind of improved for for um clean vehicles. So um at at any opportunity to um invest some of the city's funds in that kind of technology would be appreciated from one commissioner.
I I appreciate the comments and uh the the director and I actually had a the conversation that in that regard. Um as we were putting them together, so um please know it is it is a priority of ours and and also I I mentioned uh some other procurement actions. We have a an energy action plan that was funded in in the current year's budget. Um and that RFP is currently out on the street as well. And uh looking at the greenhouse gas inventory that was uh performed for Livingston and Park County. My recollection is that the city fleet uh accounts for somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. So uh that will be an area of focus for that project as well.
Uh glad to hear it. Thank you. Um and that covers my questions for now. Thanks, someone.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Shorts?
Um I haven't had a chance really to dig deep on here, but it looks good to me. I don't see any any problems. Job well done. Page. And Mr. Gager, um no, I have nothing to offer. It's it's legible. I can understand it, which says a lot. Really, it really does. They they seem to get better every year, so thank you for the hard work and how well laid out it is. Appreciate it and I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Shorts, uh Chair Cale, would you like to go next?
Sure. Um first, thank you uh for a really nicely as as Commissioner Schwartz said, well that well laid out budget that's easy to read. I appreciate all of that. Um, Mr. Gager, I have a couple of questions and I I kind of brought them up to you earlier today, so I I would just, I think it'd be great for the public to to hear the answer to this um just in case they happen to notice too, but there's a few. Let me flip back here. Um if you can notice it in tab eighteen, which is street maintenance. Um and I'm actually looking back at FY twenty twenty three and we have office supplies and we have office supplies listed at fifty three thousand dollars in twenty twenty three. And there's a couple other departments that had something similar, and I I know you had an explanation for that, and I wondered if you could just share in case anyone's noticed that.
Uh yeah, absolutely, uh Chair Cale. I appreciate the question and um that that large number in uh the FY twenty three actuals uh that appears on eighteen dash three uh fifty three thousand one hundred and eight dollars, that actually um is a result of the administrative cost allocation. Um hit that account in that year, and and I would point folks over to the the following page, eighteen dash four. Um uh one of the, one of the last lines there, uh that's account three nine two. Uh you'll notice in in FY twenty three, there is no administrative cost allocation figure, although there are in uh in in the subsequent columns, and so that was um just the the area that uh administrative cost allocation hit in that particular year.
Great, thank you. And I'll just note that I noticed that in a couple of the sort of like public works departments. I think I saw that in water. Um and sewer, so if other folks see that, they'll know that that, I think you said that 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 was all that administrative cost just kind of hit the wrong or an odd moniker office supplies, so. That really was my my biggest question, just because it looked odd to me, and I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. Um but everything else looks great. Um thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Maybe the next meeting I'll have more.
Thank you. Um yeah, I'll I'll add that I'll go through this in more detail in the next couple of weeks, so I'm sure I'll have more questions. But I have thoughts based on what you offered tonight, Mr. Gager. So I appreciate the clerk position going to full time. Um I think that was something that the commission identified, a position that we were in support of, so I'm glad to see that it's working out. Um and that we were validated, that there was plenty of work for a clerk to do. Um if not, we can always make more. Yeah, the commission, yeah. Um.
I think she's good.
Yeah, she's good. Um I'm sure we'll keep her busy. Um so thank you for that, also getting positive feedback from the community about that, so about that position and the work that's happening there. I'm also glad to hear about the personnel changes, the benefit improvements. They're happening to support staff. I know that's another thing the commission's been talking about a really long time, so I appreciate your approach. Um to work on improving improving um, what's the word I'm looking for? Like all of the benefits to city staff, to make it a more appealing environment to work in, not just pay, but also benefits. So thank you for that. Um I also noted the vehi- the vehicles, as Commissioner Lyons pointed out, it's a lot of vehicles. Um typically on the commission, what I've seen is an investment in police and not so much the other departments, and that always caught the eye of the public. Wondering why the police was getting investments when, say, they wouldn't get reliable garbage pickup. So I appreciated that it was, it felt more balanced this year um than it probably ever has since I've been on the commission. Um I I do appreciate Commissioners, Commissioner Lyons' comments that we should be considering long-term impacts of vehicles as um as the market is changing and improvements are coming. I recognize also that we'll need to make some investments in infrastructure to support an electric fleet. If that's what the city decides to move to, um so I hope that'll be certainly part of the conversation with an energy action plan, because it will be significant. And we'll also have to think about where they'll live, all of those things. Um but I sure hope those conversations will happen. Um I liked to see also the three seasonals moving to one year-round employee. I think that that seems a lot more equitable for staff to have reliable work year-round as opposed to episodic work, maybe without benefits their family can count on. So this is really nice. Um a nice improvement, I think, that also meets the needs of the community, asking for year-round service. Um appreciate some of this new public works um vehicles that are coming, like the street sweepers and the garbage trucks and other equipment. Um I wanted to ask you about the tiered rate that we implemented last year, the tiered water rate. Because it was intentional to get a desired impact or a desired outcome. Could you share with us if we're getting the desired outcome from the tiered rate, the tiered water rate?
Um uh you know, we uh I will say that we will probably defer and we can bring some information on actual water usage by tier back to you folks at the next meeting. Um we looked at it at a at a bit of a high level, um and uh and we'll bring some more drill down.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if there's any like unintended con- consequences, I'm always really interested in the intended consequences of policy, but also the unintended consequences of policy. So if there's anything like that we need to know, it sure would be a great time to hear um what the impacts of those decisions were across the board. It it might be too soon to know all the things, but.
Well, I you know, we we can say that there was was one uh somewhat unintended uh impact of of that tiered policy that that we're evaluating um the the policy uh solution for. Um and 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 it is really that 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 top tier, while it is um substantially consists of hotels and other large uh water users like that. Um there are actually uh a a few of our mobile home parks that actually uh were caught up in that higher tier as well. And so um there has been a a little bit of a rate increase on on some of our um you know, most most economically disadvantaged members of the community. And so we are looking at a a policy prescription that might um kind of rectify that little bit of a of a hangup there.
That sounds great. I'm really open to hearing, like, if there's where we can, like, refine the policy to meet the intended. You see lots of head nods at the table to meet the intended, the intentions of the commission when it comes to these kinds of policies. Um equity seems to be an important thing for this commission, so thank you for that. That'll be exciting. Um also, I'm in support of the second garbage truck. I trust with your experience in contracts. If there is a change in um service that you would just work in the work in the trucks into the contract in a way that maximizes the benefit to our community. Um but I'm in favor of it just because the service has been so unreliable, and that's gotta be just awful, not just for the people who live here, but also for the people who work for the city when they go in and they don't know. Like, I would be annoyed if every time I sat down at my desk, my computer didn't work, because then I couldn't do my job. And so I can't imagine what it's like to be the person who drives that truck or the people that drive those trucks and they go into work and they can't do their job that day. That would be really frustrating.
Especially when you woke up at three AM to do the job.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so um because even if, even if the service delivery changes, things don't move so quickly, right, that like, well, well, the city still has to provide service in the interim regardless of what happens next, and so I would like that service to be reliable while it's um you know, our responsibility to offer it. Um that's my initial feedback based on what you offered tonight. I would ask that um perhaps you could print off that presentation and put it in our mailboxes so that, or however the commissioners like to receive information from you. Just so we could slide it into the budget book as we're working through it over the next couple of weeks. It's getting more head nods. Um uh anything that you would like to add, Chair Cale?
No, I think you, I think you've covered it. Thank you. Uh nice to meet you.
Okay. Um are you looking for any other feedback at this time from us, or do you feel good with what you heard tonight?
No, this uh I appreciate the feedback again, three hundred and eighty pages. Uh don't expect anyone to read it in in four or five days. So we look forward to uh more questions and comments in um in the the next two weeks.
Um, thank you. The last thing I would close with actually is that I do agree with Commissioner Shorts. Um Commissioners say this every year, that the budgets are better. Um so perhaps it doesn't sound meaningful because we keep repeating it, but it actually does look better. Like, it really does look better.
Are you referring to the cover? You know, it is the Aurora Borealis from uh a Friday or.
Oh, good. Oh, yeah.
But I'm also referring to, the other things that I'm referring to are um I appreciate in your budget message how you're reflecting back on the thing that's the most important to the community, and that is the growth policy. And the work isn't done there, and I also appreciate um that you've identified some other things that are key issues to the community, and they're not being left behind, like the rail crossing, for example. Um while you might not see a lot of people in the room or online tonight talking about this, people will talk about this budget as it comes to be. And these are issues that they'll keep bringing up, so I appreciate that you put it in here where it matters most in the budget. All right. Guys, I would like to take a break before we move on with this agenda.
Make a motion to take ten.
Okay, a motion by Shorts and a second by Cale. Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll see you in ten minutes. Thank you. Thank you. You ready, guys?
Go for it.
All right. So next up on the agenda, we're gonna pick up where we left off with the um action items. This action item be consideration of new city logo, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. The item before you is one that began a little over a year ago when the city commission awarded a uh contract to the Abby Agency um for some design work. And uh you may recall, uh we worked through a process last summer to um evaluate what types of uh of elements were uh most preferred in a logo. And in uh November of twenty twenty three, um I brought forward some or the we we brought forward uh several logo choices and the the commission uh winnowed those choices down to two finalists and um and and at the um point of of decision, it was uh determined And at the point of decision, it was determined that we should perhaps. Broaden the, broaden the aperture a bit and consider some other opportunities. And so at that point. I went back to the Abbey Agency and I will share my screen here as I talk. But we. As many in the community know, our current logo is here on the left side of the screen. And shows the Yellowstone Street Bridge in Sacagawea Park along with some trees. And we went back into the archives and found the old letterhead. And located our previous logo, which is depicted here on the right. And is a bit of a badge with mountains, the sun, a train, a gentleman catching an extraordinarily large fish. Then there are some, 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 looks like wheat grains there. And we can't quite discern why the logo has eighteen ninety-eight. As the date there is not a date that has, we've been able to attach any significance to. Might perhaps be a typographical error with the eighteen eighty-nine when we were incorporated, but speculation on my part. So what we did is, we heard very firmly from the commission and the community that. The logo should reflect the history of Livingston, and so. I asked the Abbey Agency to come back and re-envision or reimagine our two. Prior logos, our current and our prior logo. And so within the packet tonight are our two additional logo concepts. And the first one I'll show here is the kind of the re-envisioning of the current logo. Again, we have the Yellowstone Street Bridge with some trees in front of the mountains, which include both Livingston Peak. As well as Sleeping Giant. And then the second logo that's. The team re-envisioned. Was the badge logo, and again, we have included a healthy-sized fish here. And rather than the, you know, kind of reincorporating a train that appeared in the original version. You know, we heard, I think, in our public comments and also that. In the survey, that the Yellowstone Street Bridge was important to community members. It is, I believe, the only logo in America that has the Yellowstone Street Bridge in it. And so these are our two re-envisioned logos. And then I will, you know, share them here side by side along with the prior two finalists. And, you know, at this point, I would open it up to the commission for their comments and questions.
Thanks, Mr. Gager. I just want to start by saying that I appreciate that you brought this to us. I realize that in. I realize that this is not a policy decision, and for most communities, this would just be an administrative decision that would never come before the commission, so I appreciate that you're. Taking the commission into consideration and also the public, even though it's added a lot of time to the process, so thanks for that. All right, so commissioners, let's start. With, actually, I'm going to check in with Chair Kail. Do you want? Do you want me to start with public comment before we move to the commission again?
I think that might seem like a good idea. I'm going to put a comment first.
That's what I'll do then. All right, so let's start with public comment. Folks in the room that want to give comment on the logo tonight, any feedback? No? Okay. I'll look online, people online that would like to offer feedback on these new logos. I see a face. Angela, would you like to go first?
Sure. Oh, my gosh, I love these. Especially like number one. Are they going to put color to it, or is it going to be black and white is my main question? I like them way better than the previous. Concepts. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Angela, for that feedback. I know you're at the last go-around with this too, so thanks for coming back and keeping the conversation going. Other folks online? That would like to offer a comment on the logos? We'd love to hear from you. The commission would love to hear from you. Please, tell us what you think. Anyone? Mr. Gager, do you want to put it back on screen again, maybe like version one and two, and just give people a chance to look one more time before I close comment? Because it would be really great to get, for us to get some comment from you guys tonight. All right, so there they are. Concept one on the left, concept two is on the right, but sort of in the middle, and on the right, the two circular ones was, were the logos where we left off last year. So people online, please let us know what you think. Who wants to go next? Patricia? Thank you.
I still want to give a comment that I've heard so much in the community, which is simply. It's so hard for people to understand when the people made the comment that they really liked the logo we have. They really meant what they were saying. And I don't see why still we have to. To change the logo, so the comment I hear throughout the community is still. What part of no, no, they understand. So that's a comment that I hear pretty universally. Thank you.
Patricia, thank you. That's something the commission can discuss also. I appreciate that. Other folks online? Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. Not seeing any takers. Public comment is closed. For the logo. All right, commissioners, who would like to go first? So. I think we can ask questions, we can. Share our thoughts and ideas. I think I'll start with Angela's question, if that works for you all, and then. Patricia asked a question that we can reflect on as commissioners. Why change the logo? Does that work for you guys? Does that work for you too, Chair Kail? Okay. Mr. Gager, color, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, colorized versions will be prepared when we settle on a logo. I've opted to bring forward the black and white concepts as they are, a bit easier to digest and. And there's a little bit less work involved than actually fully colorizing these.
Great, so it's just step one, pick a logo, step. Future would be talking about color.
Coming up with our, yes, our corporate color scheme, as it were.
Our corporate color scheme.
There was, there's a whole style manual that was part of this RFP and.
Just hadn't heard it called a corporate color scheme. That was nice consonance. Thank you for that. Commissioners?
I'll start. I swear there's still a truck that has that, that badge.
Will you just like? I'm sorry, thank you.
Oh, there is a truck.
There is a truck. Public Works that has that. Yeah, I don't know if it's licensed to go on the street, but. I like either one of these concepts. I think the fish is important, but. Yeah. I'm not going to get in. I like it far better than what we had the last time and. While you guys are deliberating, I'm. Keep scratching my head, which one I'm going to pick.
Did you want to respond at all to, I just want to give us all a chance to respond to Patricia's question about why change the logo from your perspective as commissioner?
Me?
Yeah, and because we can each speak to that if we choose. You don't have to.
Well, I love the current logo. I think it's beautiful. The only thing is it does, doesn't translate very well. In my opinion, the clothing or anything like that, you know, branding ones, you know, stuff like that. And. Yeah, and I have a change. Fresher look. Our county did it. Like I said, I still like the simplicity of theirs and. Way that theirs turned out. And. Yeah, no big real burning desire or reason, but I really do like the old logo a lot, and it's beautiful, but I think it's time for a change.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And then Commissioner Lyons, did you say you wanted to go next?
Thank you. Mr. Gager, would you please? You know, I think that you've outlined some of the impetus for the change. Aside from the sunk costs that have gone into developing a new logo. What would be the challenges of persisting with our current logo? The current logo has some reproducibility challenges, and I, I actually had thought over the weekend that I would wear my Night Owl shirts. This evening because it, on the back of the shirt has, you know, all of the sponsors, and the city is a sponsor. And all of our logos are in black and white, and the current city logo in black and white really just looks like a gray oval with the word City of Livingston over it. And so, you know, yeah, we do, you know, face that challenge of reproducibility. And it really looks fantastic on the flag outside of City Hall when we fly the big, you know, three-by-five flag. But in most other applications, it becomes very, very difficult to actually discern what our logo is other than a smorgasbord of watercolors. So that really is the chief challenge that we would have using it as far as, you know, costs. You know, I guess the outside of the sunk costs of this contract to stick with the current logo is a no-cost proposition. Thank you. Yeah, the term that comes to mind for me in thinking about, I actually would say in comparing the proposed logos to the existing logos, legibility. Like, it does require a special format to really appreciate the beauty in the current logo. I think it's. I like, I agree with everyone's sentiments of, you know, it's unique and it's, and it's really, it's really beautiful, but it's not particularly legible. And especially in certain circumstances. So just want to reiterate that point that Mr. Gager just made. I will also voice my approval of the new, the new concepts. I think they did a good job of taking. You did a good job of taking our feedback and presenting it to the, to the consultant, and then they did a good job of translating that into an image that's. Encapsulates a lot more of what we were looking for. My preference, it's actually a very strong preference for one over two. I appreciate the, you know, the culture of fishing in our community. And I'll leave that at that, and I like concept one. Much better.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Anything else?
That's all.
Would you like to go next, Commissioner Willetts?
Sure.
Thanks.
I have also heard from members of the public about the logo we have, just echoing the comments that it's a great logo, it's beautiful, and I agree with them. I think it's great, it's very unique, although I have a brand-new, recently embroidered logo. And it doesn't look anything at all like what our logo looks like when you print it out in the appropriate format, so. Case in point right here, it just doesn't transfer in some instances. I appreciate, I was a part of the meetings to begin with last year with these as a commissioner, but as a member of the public, and I am. Pleased that Mr. Gager has taken the input from the community and from the commissioners to go back to the Abbey Agency, and it looks like they've done a tremendous amount of work. I have a question about eighteen eighty-two versus eighteen eighty-nine for the logo. I don't know which one it's, I guess we were incorporated in eighteen eighty-nine, but I think established in eighteen eighty-two, not exactly sure where that comes from. And for the, and in particular for these two, I like concept two. That's the one that I like. That hook in front of the fish looks like something that I would have been thrown around, no fly at it at all, it's just a bare hook. I spat out my fly, so there's that. I feel like concept number one could use the most iconic. In Livingston image of all, which is a grocery bag about thirty feet up in the tree. Livingston tree flower. But I feel like concept number two is, it kind of speaks to our nature with the bridge, and I feel like the lettering is better in it. And just the overall balance of the, of the logo itself, so. Yeah, we're picking sides on this one. I'm going to go for number two. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Chair Kail?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Mr. Gager, for going back to the Abbey Agency. I feel like these two new designs are a lot more special and different. And not something that you see every day, and I think that was my, my issue with the first two. So thank you for doing that. You know, when it comes to, you know, why changing, you know, from the old logo, I think. Everyone that had spoken before me has said it exactly right, you know, they're hard, it's hard to reproduce. In a lot of applications. I know that we would like to start doing different signage throughout town, and that old logo is hard to reproduce. I'd like to start seeing some of that wayfare and signage. Wayfinding and signage go up, and so to get a new logo in place to be able to do that is important and exciting. I like them both, I like. I like parts of both of them. I think we get right down to it. And I'm looking on two different screens, because I've got my both computers up so I can see these better. I think that I do like concept one the best of the two at this point, is I think where I'm leaning. But excited to see kind of where we go with this, and thank you again, Mr. Gager, for persevering and asking for some more content. How are you?
Thank you, Chair Kail. I would agree with Commissioner Lyons that. I don't know how you did it, that you managed to make any sense of that meaning and what we wanted. Perhaps this is a good time to say this, it's why it's wonderful to have a professional in your seat that, so they can professionally like interpret elected officials. Thank you. Because we also work all day. Retired people, so thank you for making sense of what we said. To Patricia's question, why change the logo? I agree with what all my fellow commissioners said. The other two things that. We haven't really talked about that are important to me as one commissioner is that I would like to see standard application of our logo across city departments. And I think for some departments, it's been. Over the years, some departments have their own logos, which has added some confusion to the public about. How departments fit in with the city or if they're a part of the city, and also. When non-city logos are used by city departments, it also adds confusion about relationships between partners in the city. I think it doesn't speak negatively of the, of the departments that are using different logos. I think it speaks to. The lack of practicality of our logo that departments are not able to use it to represent their departments, if that makes sense. Like, we need, we need something that departments can easily use. And my understanding when we started this process was that. The logos would be, or the logo would be designed in a way where different departments could apply it to their department. To, so it could be personalized, say, for police or fire or. The rec department or whatever department it is. Public Works, if they don't like my new shirt, maybe they want like a Public Works. You know, special logo. That was supposed to be funny because my shirt was Public Works. So that is really important, I think. It's important that staff can use the logo, and then it's easy for them. Staff have a different um, reason to use the logo than the public or commissioners. It's something they have to work with every single day. When they go out across the state or the region and represent our community, you know, especially when you hear Mister Gauger talking about what does our logo look like? Um, with fifty other city logos, how does ours compare and does it represent? The, our community, the way that we want to be represented in a wider audience. So that's important to me. Um. So I want everybody to be proud of the City of Livingston when they're out in the world. And our logo is part of it. The other thing that we haven't talked about is equity. Um, we talk about equity. On the commission and how we want our policies to be equitable in our written materials and our website and the logo is part of that. Um. We've touched on it briefly at commission meetings in one way or another. That we can't all see the same, but also equity matters on the website and. Um, it's a more recent thing that websites have become equitable for people and logos are a part of it, colors, fonts, images. Losing my vision, the way that I regularly had vision a couple of years ago, really like keyed me into that too. I didn't completely lose my vision, but I lost like the ability to use my vision normally, if you guys remember, because you were. So I think that's really important and I think a new logo brings us like a more equitable. City representation via a logo. It's a big deal. Alright, so which one do I like more? I'll be honest with you, when I first saw these, I thought concept two looked like the fish was eating the bridge. And then when I looked at the old ones with the badges, it looks like the fish is trying to eat the train. So I guess it's like, are we going for fish eating inanimate objects? Maybe if that's what we want, we put a bag on the end of the hook. Commissioner Welch, if that like.
It's about as good as the fly fishing setup on that I can get.
Yeah, um, but I, but also like hearing from the public. I like both of these better. Um. I like both of these better than the last two. But hearing from the public and how the public, you know, the theme that I've gotten as a commissioner is. Um, we're moving forward and things are changing and we have to respond to all these external pressures. But the public also wants to maintain. The way things are and the current culture and the, the current values while there's all these changes happening. Which makes me lean towards logo one, just because it's more like the current logo, even though it's new. That was a lot of words that I just said. So I'm leaning towards one. So it sounds like we have um, Quentin likes both, but also really likes the fish. Lyons, sorry, I put Quentin instead of Schwartz.
Dang it.
Put everybody else's last name. Schwartz likes both, but is leaning, leaning a little bit towards the fish. Lyons likes one. Um, Welch likes two, Kale likes one, Newt's likes one. So we are split. But we have more in favor of one than two. So now let's revisit the commission and see what you guys think. Any fault comments?
I went, yeah, first um, I'm gonna go back to what I said regarding the county's logo, less is more. Which would lead me more to concept one.
Okay.
And I've just, I'm not really in favor of the badge kind of thing either, so. So I, I, I'm, I'm one.
You're one, okay. Other commissioners?
And I don't fish either, so I'm. I eat it.
So there's no conflict of interest with fish?
Well, my kids, you, you, you catch the fish, you clean them, you bring them, I'll, I'll feed you, but.
Okay, so it sounds like you're good with one.
Yeah, I'm good with one.
And then I saw Lyons's hand go up.
Uh, one. One, just one note of appreciation for one. Uh. Yeah, I made a comment on, of an earlier one about the trees not reflecting the trees that we have here.
Yep.
And this is like perfect. Um, you can see that there's some deciduous trees and a couple of conifers and that's. I mean, and also that, those are the trees that you see right there by the bridge too. So. And they're simple, but they're representative. Um, and uh, we're also a tree city.
Tree city, yes.
Um, and so I think that like, I just think that all of the elements are there in, in one. Simply, it's like concise and elegant and I think it's great and I really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Welch, would you like to add anything?
No, I'm still for number two.
Welch is number two. Um, Chair Kale, would you like to add anything?
Um, I think, I think Commissioner um, Lyons kind of hit it on the head with the word elegant for uh. Concept one nicely said. Um. And I do like, as you said too, that it hearkens back to the original logo that everyone liked so much, but it's. It's simpler. Um, and, and it's recreatable. Um. Yeah, I'm, I still really like one.
Um, thank you, commissioners. I am still in favor of one. Um. Do we have anything else to add? Otherwise, we can. Anything else to add?
Are you gonna put a date on number one?
Oh, that's, that's what I wanted to address. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. We did talk about the year. Um. We did talk about the year in previous conversations with the logo, so I would like to have Mister Gauger respond to that if.
Please.
If you can go on the way, take us in the wayback machine.
Uh, yes, ab- absolutely. So uh, eighteen eighty-nine is the year of incorporation. Um, for the City of Livingston. Eighteen eighty-two was the year that the railroad came to town. And uh, but we, we did have some conversations at a staff level that. You know, quite honestly, both of those, those dates are a little arbitrary. And, and we, someone said, well, why not do nine thousand B.C. because that's when, you know, we've got bones around here. Uh, I guess not to, not to take us down a rabbit hole on dates, but uh, it's um, yeah, the. That is the genesis of the eighteen eighty.
Thank you.
Do you think nine thousand B.C. would have been on that? Just kidding.
It would be unique.
It would and then we create some conversation.
There's, there's a reference to the different. Geologic ages in, in that image, you know, we've got like. Yeah, there's, there's geologic time in the, in the mountains and then there's um, modern time in the bridge.
And this is a look shallow, shallow sea.
Exactly.
Mast it up.
It also has all four elements for people that get into that much with like the sun, air.
And I don't, I don't think the dates are necessary having a date on there either. It's just one less thing. It's trying to keep it simple.
It, it's hard to imagine how it would fit.
Yeah, and, and yeah.
It actually looks great on too and I think it's hard.
Yeah, exactly. There's a place for it.
I don't think it's necessary. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Schwartz. I think it's, it's not necessary in the logo.
So I guess when we go in to get our tattoos, four of us can get number one and the fifth one can get number two. Our commitment to the commission. Um, alright, I'm ready for a motion, please. If there's nothing else.
I move to approve logo option one as the C- City of Livingston's official logo. Okay.
Uh, motion by Quentin to approve logo option one and gosh, why do I keep saying Quentin? I'm so sorry.
First name basis.
I'm not doing it to anybody else but you. I'm sorry. Okay, let me try again. So a motion by Commissioner Schwartz to approve logo option number one and second by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale?
Four.
Vice Chair Newt's.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Four.
Commissioner Welch.
Against.
Motion passes. Um. Great. So next up on the agenda. Is actually item C, Discussion of Direction Regarding Commission Listening Sessions. Mister Gauger.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Newt's. The item for you is um, is a conversation that was initiated, I believe, two meetings ago. Uh, by, by Commissioner Schwartz and um, and, and it is the subject of uh, city commission listening sessions and so. I wanted to give you folks the opportunity um, to, to kind of talk amongst yourselves and. Uh, provide direction to staff about commission listening sessions and, you know, before, uh, before we do so. Um, you know, I would point out that under uh, the Mon- Montana Open Meeting Law, uh, having two commissioners at a meeting. Um, makes it a, a, not a public meeting. Um, and, and so uh, if we have a quorum three or more. Uh, that is a public meeting which triggers certain requirements for uh, agendas and uh, noticing and, and minutes. Um, not that that is uh, an, an issue. Um, staff is, is able to uh, to attend any listening sessions that you may have. Uh, but, but a consideration for you folks as far as logistics are concerned and so. Uh, what we would be uh, happy to take direction on would be um, different dates. Uh, or, or times um, of day uh, that you folks would like to have listening sessions and then. Um, to the extent that, that the commission has certain topics that they would like to discuss. Uh, those, those would be helpful just as they help us um, in, in a planned rooms. Uh, certainly we have this room available to us here in the uh, in the building. Um, and, but we could also venture out into, into other spaces. Um, whether they are uh, city parks, um, other city facilities, including up on the north side at, you know, the, the field house up there. Um, or, or other private businesses. Um, the, the team and I will be very happy to uh, to schedule. Um, appropriate venues, uh, just once we have an understanding of uh, how many commissioners and, and, and if they are general listening sessions. We would default towards a, a larger space such as this. So uh, I'll, I'll stand for uh, any direction you may like to give.
Thank you, Mister Gauger. Um, I, I realized when this was brought up, not all five commissioners were present, but we had a quorum. Commissioner Schwartz, would you like to frame this?
Well, I'll just say, yeah, in the, it's something that Commissioner Bennett started, you know, on his own and uh. I carried on, you know, and with, you know, Mel Friedman, but generally do, you know. On my own, like at the Food and Resource Center, Michael Cormick allowed me to use that room and then Melissa and I um. Did one at the Pickle Barrel. I think we did one at another business.
Mustangs, when Mustangs was here.
Yeah.
Resource Center.
Right, Food and Resource Center and stuff like that, so. Um. And generally it was on a Saturday morning. Eight or nine or nineish or something like that, that uh. Um, was it too early? Wasn't, you know, too late to screw up your whole Saturday and, you know, for, you know, an hour or so, you know, and uh. Just an informal way of um, you know, answering questions or, you know, people bring something to the fore that, you know, they don't want to do on social media. Or have no desire to do that way. So, um. But I also like the uh, farmer's market. The one stays there. That's worked very well in the past, um, doing that with uh. In the past with um, all the commissioners and, you know. In the past years, so I didn't do it at all last year because Mister Gauger took care of all that. It was wonderful. As long as you're in somebody from the city and um, doing that. So I'm open to any suggestions. You know, moving forward, but I think it would help to, you know, be able to publicly say, hey, come talk to us in an informal setting and uh. You know, area gripes and stuff like that here instead of on social media. Because I'm not gonna debate on social media. And it just, it does, you know, it's just a, the rabbit hole. You know, I'm not gonna go down that. And uh. So that's all I have to say.
So um, can I ask you a question before?
Sure.
Commissioner, so. I went to those with you in the before times when we had them, but also I went to some of the farmer's market. Are you open to going to the farmer's market?
Absolutely.
Mister Gauger, some of the staff? Okay, so it sounds like you're open to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As long as, you know, we have a presence there.
Yeah.
I think that's important regardless, you know, who staffs it, but you know, I don't want it to be onerous too for somebody. That's what everyone's taking.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Thoughts? Would you be interested in attending? Because this will help determine if there needs like the noticing and the staff presence. When they get a sense, when Grant, when Mister Gauger, I mean, gets a sense of um, how many of us are interested. Chair Kale, please, go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, first a question for Mister, Mister Gauger around farmer's market. Are we, is he planning to have a presence there this summer? So would that be something that, you know, sometimes the staff might have a topic that they want to discuss with or have available to. To the public and then sometimes maybe it would be a, you know, a commissioner listening session sort of thing. Is that something that's on? Uh, Mister Gauger, is that something that's on your agenda for the summer?
Uh, y- yes, it is the, the city's plan to have a tent at all farmer's markets. And we have identified a few uh, topics, but I, I don't, I, I don't think we'll have topics for every meeting. Uh, with farmer's market sixteen weeks, so um, I think we've, we've only identified a, a small handful. Uh, things like Parks Master Plan, um, and, and others that we would do some outreach on. So there are, there are ample dates available for the commission.
Okay, I think that would be helpful and certainly I'm not available to do that every farmer's market because I generally work some of those farmer's markets. Too, just with my day jobs, that makes it a little more difficult for me. Um. But yeah, I would be happy to plug in, you know, if it was a farmer's market or, you know. If other commissioners thought a coffee shop or, you know, something like that at a different day or time would work. Um, I would have, I would happily plug into a couple of those things. It seems like it might be easier for the public if it was just. Two commissioners so that we don't have to have an agenda or have to have note taking that have the ability to. Have a more informal conversation with, with the public. Um, that would just be my thought, but um, I.
I agree with that.
What other, what others think.
I'll agree with that. Yes, less burdensome.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Kale. So it sounds like you're open to both. You like the idea of a little bit less formal for the, for the.
I think for our listening sessions to just give the public that opportunity to really come and talk to us if they wanted to. I think that that. You know, the public meetings, that setting is, I think, a little um, for some folks turns them off and, and they don't want to come and have that conversation with us, so.
Thank you. Other commissioners?
I'm all in favor of it.
Absolutely. Informal. Um, I go to a lot of the farmer's markets. So if there are other commissioners there, I mean, I guess I can stay away so we don't have a walking.
Well, we just, you know, yeah, no, just, you know, hey, I'll take it this Wednesday. You take the next Wednesday. Something like that, you know.
No, just don't come to the tents. Like you just, yeah.
I try to go there in farmer's market too.
Well, let's pause for a moment because I think the farmer's market with staff is a very different scenario than Saturdays. Or.
Right.
Because staff is already going to be at the farmer's market. They're already going to plan topics.
Right.
So I think that's probably less cumbersome, right? And it sounds like there's room in the schedule for us to add our own topics, but staff is already going to be there. So I feel like that's maybe a different ask of staff than. An additional ask for staff to show up. So I think. We, because presumably those, it's not a huge lift to notice something that's already going to be publicly noticed. It's just like one additional step to put in the paper for commissioners to go.
Well, then it would be adding just Saturday. I mean, I guess we're just gonna wrap back to where we're, we're just adding Saturdays or other random.
Like Saturdays once a month or something, you know, it's.
Keeping it under form potentially then.
Right, right. And that's in the, I, I forgot, I'm sorry, the senior center now is more active, um, would be a, a good, easy venue.
Um, that's a great idea.
Hold it in as well.
Mm-hmm.
But I still like the idea of a Saturday, you know, especially for people that, you know, were during the work week, you know. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, try it and, you know, see how it goes. I, but I also like, you know, the intimacy of a. You know, business in the coffee shop or something like that too, but. But I want, I want to be able to have enough people to come.
Yeah.
And uh, and have some seating and. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lyons, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Is, is this something you'd be interested to either or, if you don't have capacity, that's okay. I'm just trying to keep track of numbers for the noticing question.
Uh, my, my capacity is my concern.
Uh, cap- my, my capacity is my concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I've been. My work has involved a lot of traveling lately. I have not been around. I've, I've kind of miraculously been here for these meetings. Uh, but not much otherwise, so, um, I do, there is like a little bit of anxiety that, that comes to mind when. Think about adding to my schedule, but I will certainly.
Understand.
I will certainly make every effort that I can. Um. To a reasonable degree.
Okay, so it sounds like you're open to maybe both ideas. And maybe then the, under a forum is easier because then it's less demand on each one of us as individuals.
Yeah, I think, um. I think that that makes. The most, the most logistical sense of keeping it under a forum. I, I also think that. You know, when you, when, when you start getting closer to all five of us. It feels like a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And to, to Chair Kale's point, that, that's, that's, that's not the in- intended purpose of us. So, um. Yeah, I think as informal as possible will probably. Um, get us a, a different cross section to our community, um, than typically comes to a meeting.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you. Um. I would agree based on my experience, I think, you know, with Commissioner Schwartz. I think not having a staff presence and having more than one commissioner without the full commission. Brought out a different segment of the population and a different segment of topics than we normally would hear from. I also think, um, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Gager brought up a whole bunch of city facilities, which I think is a good idea. And also. Your point. And Chair Kale's point about like a coffee shop or a local venue that's downtown also makes a lot of sense. So I think there's a way we can. It can be a yes and. Um, I think we were doing them like, was it monthly?
Yeah, that was it. Yeah, it was monthly.
It was monthly. So. We didn't all go to everyone and it was monthly, so we would sort of touch base at the commission meeting about who was going to attend the next one, so it was. Easy.
Yep. Exactly.
We can make decisions in real time. Um, there was not a demand on all five of us to show up to everything.
No.
Does that seem like a path forward for the commission where we can just check in? At meetings about who's going to attend the next events, so we all get to turn, but we don't.
I think that'd be perfect.
Does that work too? Okay. All right, so then the next topic is time. So it sounds like Saturday mornings is our consensus, maybe once a month.
I believe, uh, Mr. Hess wanted to.
I just want to, there's been several lawsuits involving these kind of informal meetings, so you have to make sure you're really coordinated. And you do not have three people there, because even if you accidentally have. You know, there's some confusion, you know, it's a pub- a public meeting, so you've got to be very careful.
Great.
On that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm mindful of that.
Why are you doing some coordination about who's going to be doing what on what days?
Yeah.
Great, so thank you for that. So I want to check in with the commission and then I'll come back to you. Is that what? Okay, so, um, times, we're talking Saturday mornings, once a month. For now.
Yeah, try.
Start with that.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for, okay. I see no head shakes, so that's a good sign. And then we're talking, um, farmer's market.
Yeah. Rotating it.
Okay.
They'll put a tent right next to the catamatic or.
I'll get to the next step now, Mr. Gager, and then we can come back to us to see. So here's what I would propose based on what the commission said. This is just talking about times.
Yeah.
So Saturdays. Once a month. An hour on a Saturday morning. Can you put it on an agenda prior to the Saturday? As a discussion item, so the commission can decide which of the two of us will go. So that works for the commission?
Mm-hmm.
Then we all know what, uh, we can get our counters. Okay, great. And then farmer's markets. Was my assumption correct that it's a much easier lift for staff? If you get a quorum of commissioners at the farmer's market, cause we're going to go to the farmer's market, cause we live here. And we don't, I mean, we're going to go to the farmer's market, whether there's a city tent or not, and so there's always going to be a quorum of commissioners at the farmer's market. Is that an easier lift for staff? To just notice it in case three of us are at the table or five of us are at the table?
That, that is very easy for us to put a notice of quorum out, uh, related to the farmer's market, absolutely.
Right, and so.
And last year, Mr. Gager was very mindful of not having three of us under that tent.
Yeah, unfortunately, there might be times I just send one of you away.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah.
Or you just notice it and there's a form of us under the tent and we have easy minutes. Like just, yeah, cause you're gonna, I, you're gonna identify the topics anyway. It's like a one agenda. Parks Master Plan.
Exactly.
Right.
Item on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, so it works for you guys?
Works.
The way it makes it, we're most protected. From the city attorney's perspective.
Oh, yeah.
And it gives us flexibility to go to market every week.
Yeah.
Cool, without having to check with each other first. Does that sound good? Cause we know you're going to be there working, but. That's already one commissioner. I'm going to be there. Yes, probably Willich is going to be there. If Lyons is in town, he'll be at the skate park, which is close. I know, and, and Schwartz will be there. His grandkid, he's always, he's always.
Girl softball field have lights.
All right.
Maybe we put it up here.
Commissioners, let's, um, let's, um, so that's covered. And you can put that. You'll be announcing the farmer's markets at commission meetings, so we can talk about topics ongoing. Topics. Topics for the farmer's market. Is there anything you want to make sure is covered? Do you have any like burning pressing topics you want to hear from the public on? Anyone? I, I already have one. I have two. Burning topics from the public.
Okay.
Um, I would say. Um, it'd be great to find a way to. Get input on like native plants, trees, those topics where the tree board kind of left off. If it fits with city plans, that's even better, right? If it fits within any of the plans we're working on, that's fantastic. If it doesn't, I still would love to hear. And then another topic would be trails. A lot of people have bringing, been bringing trail ideas forward, um. I, I think it'd be great if staff were there in addition to. Commissioners, cause sometimes people get really, um, in the weeds on like substrate and topics that don't pertain to the commission. Um. But also sometimes it's big picture things that would be commission level. But I think like just having containers for some of these topics that people like to get weedy on would be nice.
And SME for whatever topic it is that we're. Going to touch on perhaps some of these roads, some of these, perhaps some of them. Trails.
Yeah, I've been getting positive feedback about staff and commissioners showing up together.
Yeah.
Even last summer, people really liked it, like when say Maggie was there and like commissioners were there also to talk about wellness center locations. So. Anything you guys would add for topics?
Wellness center locations just last summer.
Can you believe that?
It was like so long ago. Many years ago.
Yeah.
I'm still a hot rod here.
Um, anything else you can think of right now? Cause we can just bring it up to.
Parade route. Parade route. Number of things, overpasses.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we, that, we, it couldn't evolve too, yeah.
I mean, crossing actually would be good if there's motion on the. You know, when, if crossing things materialize, that would actually be a really. When the time comes.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, no, nothing? If not, I'll move on if you guys are good.
Go.
All right, great. So if you can just bring that back to us, I think that'll be really helpful. I would say one thing I think would be really helpful as a commissioner, when we do those. When we do the listening sessions, um. One thing we used to do on the commission was commissioners that would attend things when the whole commission wasn't there, those commissioners could sometimes report out.
Yeah.
To the rest of the commission what we heard. So like, when we went to Green Acres, we.
We reported back, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and so this is what we heard, this is what the public's interested in, so the whole commission benefited.
Right.
That would.
Where is the line on a walking meeting then?
So if like two of us go to a Green Acres meeting and we come back to a public meeting and share what the public shared with us, where's the line on a walking meeting?
Um, we're not making any decisions, so. So a- a- as long as that third commissioner is brought in, in a public forum. And what was, you know, shared in those private conversations is shared publicly, somewhat like ex parte communications.
Yeah, I, I think I would report at the next meeting. Yeah. Unless there's something. Really urgent or something, but.
So your question was like, where's the line for a walking meeting? And it sounds like if the commissioners that got information shares it with the other commissioners in a public setting. Then it's not a walking meeting because we're in an open meeting. Does that address your concern?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a good question.
It's great. I think part of the conversation when we talk about the next meeting is a recap of the previous meeting. Just in our process of. Going through.
Yeah.
The schedule and.
Mm-hmm.
Findings.
Can you make it so?
Absolutely.
Number one. Thanks for picking that up, that reference. Um, all right. You got it too? You got number one? Very good. All right, so are we ready to move on? All right, so next up. Moving right along, city manager comments. Mr. Gager.
You know, I will, I will make it brief and I will thank, uh, all of the staff that was able to make it here this evening. Really appreciate the, uh, the long night. And, uh, Commissioner, I, I thank you for, uh, uh, a great conversation on, on the budget and, uh, community outreach and. Uh, look forward to, to some of these, uh, listening sessions to hear what the community has to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioner Willich.
Um, I will also be brief. Uh, I want to thank the. City manager and finance director and all of the staff involved with, with during. The budget, the primary budget, looks fantastic. It's easily digestible, even if it is three hundred odd pages. And, um. I, uh, I just appreciate the amount of work that goes into it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, I will echo Commissioner Willich's comments, uh. Very eligible to use that word again this evening. Um. And then, uh, really, this is to avoid forgetting mentioning it. In the next two weeks, I might not be able to attend the. June third meeting. Um, I will be traveling to work. I will make every effort to call in, but that might not be possible.
Um, Commissioner Lyons, will you? You'll be able to reach out to Mr. Gager if you have. Um. Concerns about the budget or ideas about the budget that he could bring forward to the commission? Does that sound good? I just want to make sure your. Interests are also represented.
Yeah, is that the appropriate mechanism? For doing that?
What would you prefer?
It would work well for me if it, if you're able to, you know, and, and if you'd like to set up a meeting before you go and you can just. We can verbalize it and go through it that way and happy to report back to the commission. Thank you.
That way it just prevents any quorum, I was thinking, like any. Any like concerns about walking meetings that the public might have too, if you can get them straight to him and then he lends it to us in a public setting.
Right.
That work?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I know it's extra, but thank you. Just want to make sure also represented.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Quentin or Commissioner Schwartz.
You.
Okay.
Uh, I, no, I have nothing. I just. Overruled. I don't know. Sixty degrees. Degrees, okay. That's just forty-eight, you know, dur- during the day. Okay, how are you?
All right. Um, I would say. Thank you to the commission. For a good meeting. I'm really grateful for our budget conversation and I'm also really grateful that we. Um. Made a decision on the logo and came to. Something closer to consensus. I think it'll be nice to have way signing fines move forward and. Because that's a thing that's been hanging out there waiting for a logo and all the other things that, um, have been waiting on the logo, so I'm looking forward to seeing what's next. Thank you also, Mr. Gager, for making sense of that meeting last year. And, um, bringing it forward in an iterative process, in an iterative process where. We can, and including us, quite frankly, when you didn't have to. Thanks for including us. It says a lot about your leadership style. We appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, and look forward to farmer's markets and listening sessions. So, uh, Chair Kale.
Thank you. First, uh, Vice Chair Newt, thank you so much for running the meetings from, from the room there. I really appreciate it. Um. I'm here, uh, out of town taking care of a friend who, um, is dying of cancer, so, um, I'm. Been doing that and I really appreciate the support from all of you, uh, back there in Livingston and. Um, I'll be home as soon, as soon as the time is right, um, but so just if folks are wondering, that's what, what I've been up to, um. I, uh. Appreciate the budget conversation today. It was wonderful, um, and thank you to Mr. Gager and. The finance director for all the work on that budget. Um, and I also am very excited about. Um, a new logo and all the things that will come with that logo, and so thank you for the additional work on that, um, from everyone, so. Thank you for a lovely evening and, um. Hope to see you all soon. I yield.
Yeah, and Chair Kale, let us know what you need from us. We're here to support each other, so. I'm glad you're able to make it tonight. Um, all right, so on that note. Do you have a motion to adjourn?